Tonight, and Ms. Sylvia, if you will, call roll, please.
Commissioner Billingsley, Childers, Headley.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Bone.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Perkins.
Here. And we do have a quorum here. Commissioner Billingsley is not present. If y'all will, I've asked Commissioner Childers to lead us in prayer and Commissioner Perkins to lead us in the pledge. If y'all will stand with us, please.
Let's pray. Father, we love you and we thank you for always loving us. We ask God that you be with us as we do the county's business here, that we can be found pleasing in your sight. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. All right, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Motion, Commissioner Bone, Second Commissioner Hall. Any discussion, any additions or deletions? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the agenda, raise your hand. All opposed, it passes unanimously. I have no one here for public comments. Oh, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Motion, Commissioner Bone. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Childers.
I do have one question. This, I did not see Thompson under use. Is that because there was no Thompson?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I've looked at it, but they all run together after a while.
Okay, the consent agenda consists of the minutes of February the 25th and March 4th, claims list of March 11th, resolution to approve a new hire Domingo Ayala, corrections officer, resolution to approve new hire Lucas Middleton as a full-time deputy, resolution for the road department to haul material from the new courthouse side of 145 to Higgins Fair or Manuka Park, request resolution for Department heads to come before the commission to request services from the road department, request resolution to approve fund balance policy for operating funds, request a resolution to approve reimbursement for erroneous tax sale in the amount of eighteen fifty-nine oh five for, to Tommy Cox, request a resolution to approve the cleaning of the cooling tower at Chilton County Courthouse in the amount of forty-four thirty-seven from Triple Point Industries LLC, request a resolution for approval to be a Peach Jam twenty-twenty-five sponsor in the amount of five hundred dollars, request a resolution to approve pay increase for Tabitha Sizemore starting on March 1st, and under Commissioner Childers, request a resolution to approve HVAC system quote and contract from Giles Cooling and Heating for the animal control building and the chairman to be authorized to sign, request a resolution to remove Brittany Coolis from the payroll, request a resolution to approve an emergency hire for animal control tech at Chilton County Animal Control, request a resolution to advertise and field position for Chilton County Animal Control Tech Two, request resolution to pre-approve up to two thousand dollars a month for spray, spay, and neuter services. Under Commissioner Bone, request a resolution to remove Gerald Arrington from payroll effective two twenty-eight, request a resolution to remove Teddy Chambers from payroll effective January seventeenth, request a resolution to remove David Reed from payroll effective February twenty-eighth, request a resolution to advertise and field position for assistant manager of the parks, request a resolution to approve new hire for the road department, Chris Dodd Senior for equipment operator two, truck driver four, EO two, step one, effective March seventeenth, request a resolution to approve new hire for the road department, Cavante Robinson for road worker, step one, effective March seventeenth.
Mr. Chairman, five D should read tech one, not tech two.
Okay.
That's what I think. I thought tech one was on the emergency hire.
It's all good. We caught it.
Okay, great.
Okay, y'all change under five D tech two to a tech one. All right. Any other corrections? All right, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. All right, we have nothing from elected officials. Staff report, Commission Office, Ms. Sylvia.
I have nomination requests from the Chilton County Airport Authority if we wish to open those nominations tonight.
Do I have a motion to open nominations for Chilton Airport Authority?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Bone, second by Commissioner Hall. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by raising your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. And we have nominations?
Yes, you have two. And I-
Trey Caton and Keith Collins.
Collins, yes.
Okay, that would be the two nominations at present. We will hold nominations for the next meeting, then we'll meet to vet those nominees. All right.
The other is the fundraising policy. If there were any other questions on that or elaborations?
Collins. Anybody have any questions or comments on the policy or Venmo account?
The only question I had was, was the one that was brought up last night to ask our attorney to make sure that we, it allowed for the, allow for the donation stuff. Is that what, the solicitation donation?
That should be covered within this policy. Resolution recognizes causes that serve a valuable public purpose in Chilton County.
Okay, yeah, section one and section two on that?
It is. And in fact, that's really the main activity that this is designed to protect under the ethics law, is to make it clear that, you know, when you go out and you are asking citizens to support the county and its activities, that these are approved public purposes. They benefit the county rather than you individually.
Got you, all right.
All right.
Thank you for clarification.
Yes, thank you, Ben. Any other comments or questions?
Appreciate attorney's work on that. It's comprehensive, for sure.
Yes, as I joked last night, it's absolutely lawyer work. It means it's a good job. All right, no more comments. All in favor of approving, please raise your hand. Any opposed? And passes unanimously. One minute.
Who actually made the motion?
Oh, we didn't get a motion.
Who made the second?
Okay, do I have a motion? Commissioner Bone made the motion, Commissioner Perkins seconded.
Thank you.
Sorry, somebody got ahead of the discussion before the motion. Okay, now, all in favor, please let it be known by raising your hand. All opposed, and it does pass unanimously.
Thank you. I believe that's all I have.
Okay, Ms. Gina Watley.
So, thank you for your time this evening and the opportunity to proclaim April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Tonight, we have Ms. Deborah Higgins, who is here with us from the Safe House of Shelby County, to make a short presentation to increase the education and awareness of sexual assault within Chilton County. So, thank you for supporting the proclamation and for supporting the presentation that she would like to present for the exhibit. And so, thank you very much for your time.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Hello, yeah, I am Deb Higgins. I am the forensic medical services director at Safe House, as well as one of the forensic nurse examiners. So, I'm so grateful to be here and have your support, especially for April being Sexual Assault Month. That's something that is a passion of mine and near and dear to my heart. I moved from Kansas to Alabama to be part of Safe House and their mission, and so it's an honor to be here. So, those of you who are not familiar with Safe House, we are a non-for-profit organization. So, any of our services that we provide are absolutely at no cost to the survivor and also secondary trauma for counseling services to family members. We have, so we provide essential services for domestic and also sexual violence. And what that looks like is response. So, I'm in the response area where I provide domestic violence, strangulation, and also sexual assault exams, again, free of charge. And then, we do prevention and education and intervention activities, and not only in Chilton County, but Shelby, Clayton, and Coussa as well. So, what that looks like for us, over the past year, we received, I'm going to refer to my notes here, fourteen hundred calls into our crisis line. We provided shelter to a hundred and eighty victims and their children, and then we assisted over six hundred victims, survivors through our community services, as well as, including our medical services. What that looks like for Chilton County, I pulled some numbers before I came, actually. And so, for Chilton, we served seventeen clients. We had four come to our shelter, and we had a hundred and forty-four touchpoints within Chilton County. So, again, I appreciate you letting me come and be part of your meeting. I apologize for my phone going off. I had it on silent. I don't know what happened, who knows, but I apologize. So, and just to be here. So, as far as the presentation or the art installation, I left the exact dimensions on my desk. However, by, via Girl Math, the base of it is two feet, two of my feet, and then as tall as I am, and the width of, length of my arms. So, it can be one-sided or two-sided, and without, it has like an outfit or two from an example of what a survivor was wearing, and then I have examples of their story. It's called, "What Were You Wearing?" And then, and then we would include like our information on how to get ahold of Safe House and how we work together with Gina and law enforcement. So, any questions?
No, I don't think anybody's got any questions. You explained it pretty good.
Okay, and that is something that I would bring to the courthouse, and then at the end of the month, then I would pick it back up and then bring it back to Safe House. So, you guys would have to store it.
I don't see that to be a problem.
Okay, so you, you-
So, victims normally, do they present like at the hospital? I'm a nurse, so I've done several before to reach out.
Yes.
And also, that's how you do here in Chilton County. You, our hospital would notify you guys, or the person can call as well?
Yes, so the person can call, or a support person can call, and law enforcement can call, or a hospital. So, victims, if they're eighteen years old or older, they do not have to, and there is no weapon used against them, they don't have to report to law enforcement to have an exam done.
Right.
And so, yes, but those are the three, main three. We have an MOU with Chilton County Hospital to be able to go into their ER and provide that service.
Okay, okay. So, you leave your card, because I'm well versed with it. I've done that before. So, so, yeah.
Yes, I could, I'd be happy to leave my card with you.
Please, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
There was a proclamation that you wanted maybe presented to the commission. I sent the wording for the proclamation to them. Is that something that you wanted signed or?
Yes, if we could have one proclamation signed and then a photo.
Okay, so we need to vote on, we need to vote on their proclamation then. Okay, do I have a motion to accept the proclamation, no?
April.
April as-
Sexual abuse.
Sexual abuse awareness month.
I'll make that motion.
All right, Commissioner Hall, motion. Commissioner Childers, second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I failed something that was mentioned last night, and need to ask to be able to speak again tonight. Mr. Carter, I'm sorry I overlooked you.
That's okay. I was just here to talk to y'all if y'all had any questions, but I'll tell it again if you'd like me to.
Please.
My name's Brad Carter. Last year, I was president of a statewide group called the Alabama, Alabama, it's the AAAO, it's the Alabama Assessing, I can't get it all out right now. You made me nervous, Alan. I was, I was ready last night, but Alabama Association of Assessing Officials, how about that? But I'm, we're bringing, this will be the second year. I was president last year, but they brought, and brought us to Clanton last year, and we're coming back again. And this group, we promote property tech education revenue commissioner offices across the state. So, this is, we partner with Auburn University and the Alabama Department of Revenue. And so, we're bringing about two hundred people from across the state to Jeff State on Thursday, and I just wanted to extend an opportunity for y'all to come and buy them. I know we've got Peach Jam, several things going on around the county. The parks would be good to promote, you know, with this, and it would just be a short welcoming at the beginning of that meeting. So, I've just asked the other county elected officials that are coming to be there around eight forty-five. So, if y'all could do that, and if y'all have the time, I'd like to have y'all.
Be glad to. I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Can we keep this coming to Chilton County and Clanton?
They asked me about it again next year already, so I'm, I'm going to work with the city of Clanton and Jeff State and see if we can do that again.
And you said this is the district, right?
It's called a district meeting, but it's a statewide. It's, it's all the districts together, come together. But it would depend on the, this is the, kind of the president's project when this happens every year, every spring. But I think they were so blown away with the hospitality last year that it's back again, and they've already asked about next year, so.
Well, I think I speak for everybody up here. For something we need to do, keep them coming here. You know, we want the tax money, so.
It's good, and you know, it's an economic impact, and we booked, I think I told y'all last night, thirty-three rooms at the Holiday Inn in Clanton, and you know, they're buying our gas, they're eating our dinner, and all of our catering, and anything that we purchased was, was done in Chilton County for the meeting Thursday. So, love to have y'all. I think most all of the elected officials, other than the judges, should be there Thursday. So, love to have y'all just come give a welcome. Thank you, thanks for calling.
Okay. It's always good to catch somebody off guard every now and then. Commissioner Perkins usually does that.
Yeah.
And it's me. On their own business, we have nominations for Chilton Water, and we have not opened those. Can I get a motion to open nominations for Chilton Water?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Commissioner Perkins makes a motion, Commissioner Bone seconds. Is there any discussion? This will be the first of two meetings to host these, then, then we'll have our panel meet and screen them. All right, all in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. And the Chilton Water has nominated Harry Benson, I mean, Andy Millard to replace Harry Benson, and Jeff Williams for a reappointment. All right, that brings us down to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner-
When, when do we nominate anyone?
Oh, you can do it anytime. You can do it now, I'm sorry.
I'd like to nominate Doug By.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't even ask. Anybody else got a nomination? Okay, whether we'll hold nominations open until the next meeting, and then we'll close them, and the panel will convene. All right, now, Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Bone.
No, sir.
Commissioner Childers.
I'm not going to go back through the update that I gave last night, but I will take the opportunity to say that we did get more dogs in. These are, this last set are Chihuahuas. So, if anybody's in love with Chihuahuas, we've got some Chihuahuas down there that were rescued. And, and then we've got some, some fantastic other breeds. So, if you're interested in a dog, we've got plenty of them, about a hundred and forty-five of them now. We've got twenty-seven dog runs, by the way. We got a hundred and forty-five dogs.
The, the dollar amount that we set aside for the spay and the neuter, you want to tell them what, what brought that about?
Okay. The, well, you're going to catch people off guard, don't you? So, yeah. So, you know, we're getting, we're having to rebuild all of our vendors and networks and the companies that we, we do business with, and organizations we do business with. And I discovered like yesterday afternoon that we're, we could have more spay and neuter done if we increased our ability to pay faster. We're, we're not behind in our bills. It's just that by the time they bill us, and then we meet and approve that bill, it can be as much as two, two and a half weeks. And there, there are dogs that have been adopted, but the law is that we cannot leave, they can't leave our shelter without being spayed or neutered and, and have all their shots. So, to be able to get those animals to a vet sooner, we need to be able to pay up the bill that we just incurred. And so, last night, and it was in the consent agenda, the commission agreed to pre-approve up to two thousand dollars a month for spay, or for vet bills. And so, this will help expedite the process. We may have two van loads to take in a week, you know, and we'll need to take a check with a second van load is, is the point. So, I appreciate y'all putting that process in place, and I know that the ladies down at the shelter, and the, the potential adoptive parents. I mean, we've got animals waiting to go home, and we just can't send them home until they get to the vet.
Well, I think a lot of people don't realize, this is pretty much a learning on you go, your go from you two having taken over liaisons to the animal shelter, and things are not, you know, got to change the way a few things are done in order to accommodate these hundreds of animals that are coming in down there. So, you know, public needed to know that y'all are working and y'all are changing things to make it better.
Yeah, and, and I do want the general public to know Alan is down there more than I am, but we're on the same page. We communicate, and to work, the general public work well with the director. This is a whole learning. It's a whole new process for me, and Alan says a lot about him too. And so, we just want the general public to know, you know, negative comments, go down there and see. I tell you, it is a job. It's a job.
Mm-hmm, it is, and-
They have some trickery down there, I'm telling you. Those ladies work hard.
And it's a job very few people want. I don't want the job. I'll do most any kind of work, but I don't want that job. Not for me. Okay, anything else, Commissioner Childers?
No, sir, thank you.
Commissioner Hall? Commissioner Headley?
No, sir.
Commissioner Perkins?
Well, I didn't, but I do.
Wait a minute, Perkins, before you go, I, excuse me.
Is he out of order?
That's, that's beginning to be a song.
Uh, yeah.
Excuse me, Chair, I forgot to say that Ms. Linda Smith, the lady came here for the health and wellness for the community. I'll be meeting with her tomorrow night because she got a lot of plans in place for the seniors, mental health, so we're working a lot for the healthcare. So, just want the people, the general public to know that.
Okay, thank you.
So, I just wanted to give a real quick update, and, and Commissioner Williams, it's your fault, because you brought it up earlier, that I failed to do this. So, on the proposed slot limit, you know, several, it's been several months now, this commission signed a resolution in, in opposition to placing any regulations on tournament fishing on the Coussa River. It was, there was a proposed slot limit that we, as tournament anglers and several organizations in many cities felt that would drive away revenue, would drive away tourism, and cause a, an issue as far as, far as those kind of things. And we recognize the importance of it, and I wanted to thank this commission for their support in signing that. We were successful in having the Alabama DCNR back away from that proposal, so there will be no slot limit placed on the Coussa River, or tournament regulations by the state placed on tournament organizations. There was a lot of people that worked really hard on that program. Coussa River Keepers was here, and I wanted to let you know, we, we were one of nineteen governmental bodies that did sign that, that letter of opposition, which went a long way toward bringing awareness. And so, one thing about it is, is your recognition as a commission, and then those in the community that spoke with me about it, and other tournament anglers all up, I'm talking about from Lake Weiss, which would be center Alabama, all the way to Wetumpco, which affects Lake Jordan, those cities and towns that recognize the importance of tournament angling and the revenue it brings. I've already been contacted by several organizations that we were working on previously that it was in limbo, whether they, they possibly would come here or not. Currently, I do not have a contract with them, so I'm not at liberty to say who they are, but it can generate over the next three years, I think, what we come up with, seven to eight million dollars in, in direct revenue to the county. And so, that is now back on the, back on the agenda, back on the table, and it's all due to the support and recognition of, of our citizens. So, I wanted to say thank y'all. Yeah, yeah, well, and also the, our local delegates and representatives in the House and, and the Senate also.
Well, don't let Roger sell himself short. It is no easy task to shut something down in Montgomery. I've been down there several times in the last few weeks on a couple of things, and the Creole limit, I heard mentioned numerous times in the hall, and Roger was nowhere around, but they got their attention. Matter of fact, they pulled the bill before it even went to a vote. That's how powerful their message was down there. So, don't sell yourself short. I'll sell you short, but.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, anything else, Commissioner Perkins?
Not at this time.
Okay, as I've mentioned last night, I felt we needed to clarify the number of votes it takes to pass anything with this body. And let me get to that right here. And under the commission's rules and procedures under number seven F, it says, "The passage of any motion, policy ordinance, or resolution shall require the affirmative vote of a majority of the members of the commission." And I have asked for it to be changed, where it says, "Majority of the members," and put after that in parentheses, "four votes" to change that. Can I have a motion to make that change?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Childers, second by Commissioner Bone. All right, any discussion?
Can you, can you just explain real quick the reasoning behind your motion and, and-
Yes, we had, we had a couple of instances in the past four years where three votes passed a couple of resolutions. And I objected because of what this says, and what legal scholars that I had talked to, and people who wrote this, said it was meant to be four votes, because it's a seven-member commission. And that's why I'm going to spell that in here, so there would not be any questioning how many it takes to pass a resolution by this body.
Ever since I've been here, it's always been four votes, four jobs. I, I've always assumed it was.
Yeah, well, we passed a couple resolutions on three votes. I don't remember if you were here that night.
I was here a few votes. I ain't never missed a vote.
I didn't think so, but it was three votes that passed.
Was there a quorum? How many of you were here that night?
It, it doesn't matter. If there's four, if you have four here for a quorum, it takes four to pass. You gotta have, you gotta have unanimous vote on everything, if there's only four here. And that was the intent of the way this was written in the beginning. Any more questions? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Okay, next, I just asked Ms. Sylvia to send a letter out asking for the bylaws from any boards and authorities, and I got a call from one today that said that they had gotten the letter already.
Maybe an email, maybe from one, but I still don't have everybody's contact.
Okay, maybe an email. Okay, and I had to ask our attorney, Ben Goldman, to, you know, explain to everybody about special call meetings and what surrounds those.
Certainly. So, your special call meetings are, like your regular meetings, are governed by the open meetings. by the Open Meetings Act, under those notice provisions under state law, a special call meeting can be called on no less than twenty, twenty-four hours' notice, or unless it's an emergency, on no less than one hour's notice, so I, I think that there have been some pop, maybe, it may have just been the procedure of the commission in years past to provide for longer, longer periods, but Alabama law does provide for a shorter notice period, which often, you know, if you have something of importance, you need to be able to jump on it.
Well, I appreciate the ask, Ben, to do this, because we needed a special call meeting the other day, and I thought we had to have five days, I'd always thought five days, and then Ben said, no, you can call it within twenty-four hours, and the call has to be for a specific item.
That's right.
Okay.
And, and that is as opposed to your, your regular meeting, which requires seven days' notice where any general business can be taken up.
All right, thank you, Ben. Okay, anybody got questions on that? Okay, I would like to request a resolution to change the number of meetings required for nominations from three to two, and a recommendation will always, also include the interview by the interview panel would take place at the following meeting, the nomination, a recommendation by the interview panel, I'm sorry. All right, motion by Commissioner Hall, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Childers, any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by raising your hand, all opposed, and that's all I have, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion will adjourn.
Motion Commissioner Bone, second. Do I have a second? Second Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, raise-